Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We're going to start by standing and doing the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Brocko.
Yes, on this day, a little history. The United States got its name. Before that, it was called the United Colonies of North America. And today's the day when they decided that they were a country and they were equal to England and they called it the United States of America.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and one ground, and equal and liberty to all.
Okay, if you could all please remain standing. It's Pastor, he'll be right there. Pastor McPhail is here.
Hi, I'm Pastor Malcolm McPhail from New Hope Community Church. And I just want you to know, I always count it a privilege to be here and I'm thankful that we can have that privilege as the local clergy here in town to pray for our civic leaders and all of each and every one of you and for the community as well, which moving into the season we're moving into is highly important. So I want to read a quote real quick that I wrote in my quote book. A criticism, criticism is the cost of influence. As long as you don't influence anybody, nobody's going to say a peep about you. But if the greater your, but the greater your influence, the more critics you are going to have. Just want to remind you, I gave a quote yesterday to my congregation that we need to have tough skin and soft hearts. When we're criticized, maybe we have enough tough skin to ask ourselves the hard question, what is the truth about criticism? Because we're kind of moving into a critical period where there's going to be a lot of critique going on in our nation, in our city, and what's taking place. And so, but also to always maintain a soft heart. It's so important to have tough skin in leadership, but always to maintain a soft heart so we're looking at the needs of the people and the needs of others that may be hurting and may have a reason for criticizing you that's way deeper than what's showing up on the surface. So tough skin, soft hearts. And with that, I'd like to pray for you. Lord, thank you for our city council members, our mayor, Lord, all of our city employees that are present tonight. I pray that you will give them wisdom, guidance, direction, that the will of God would even prevail in many of the decisions that are taking place in our community because, Lord, you care about all the people of our community. So I pray that you will keep our community safe, you will watch over us and protect us, be with our first responders at the end of their watch, may they all come home safely because your hand was with us. We thank you for guiding and leading us and we ask those things in your name. Amen and amen. Thank you so much.
Okay, city clerks report on posting the agenda, followed by roll call.
Thank you. The agenda was posted on Friday, September 6th at 11:00 a.m. Councilmember Brocko?
Here.
Councilmember Armandaris?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Chovar?
Here.
Mayor Blankley?
Here. All right, under orders of the day, we have none. Under employee introductions, we have a few. Chief Espinoza, do you want to start? There are two in public safety, then we've got one with LeAnn and another with Heba.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the community. It's my pleasure to introduce our two newest members to our team. We'll start off with Heather Bolchik, who joined us as a public police records technician. Her hire date was September 3rd. She is actually started working for the city in 1997 as a recreation leader at La Santa Mark's Park, a graduate from Gilroy High School. In 99, she went into the private sector, started working for Home Depot, and eventually she made her way to Fresno to keep working for Home Depot. 2005, she came back into town and worked in Morgan Hill. And in 2014, started working with Chapel Pump and Supply here in town. She has an AA degree in liberal arts and a certificate of child development in this, from GAV Community College. Been married 17 years to her husband, John, two children, Jeremiah, who is a sophomore at Gavlin, and Kathleen, who's a junior at Gilroy High. In her spare time, she loves to quilt and learn new techniques with experienced quilters. She really enjoys any art and crafts, getting out doors, go hiking and camping, and also enjoying a book club for her love of reading and socializing. Please help me welcome Heather Bolchik.
So I wanted to say thank you to the Gilroy Police Department for offering the Community Police Academy, which is how I was introduced to the police department. From there, I began volunteering with the police, which is the VIPs, and did that for five years, which gave me enough courage to apply for this job. So I wanted to tell you how honored I am to continue to serve Gilroy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Madeline Clark, who joined us as a public safety communicator. Date of hire was August 26th. She is local, having gone to Gilroy schools here, attended Christopher High School, and then earned an associate's degree in communication studies from Gavlin College. Previously worked as a dispatcher for Monterey County, and we're very fortunate to have been able to hire her. She credits the strong family unit and base to her dad and her younger sister, who owes everything to both of them and who have mentored her. In her spare time, she enjoys working out at the gym, going to the beach, spending time with her younger sister. Please help me welcome Madeline Clark.
Hi, everyone. Again, I'm Madeline Clark. I'm very happy to be here. I know Chief shared a little bit, I'm born and raised from Gilroy. I left about two years ago to go live on the peninsula in Monterey. However, I came back as soon as I could. I'm extremely lucky to be from Gilroy. Everyone was able to provide me with a really strong foundation and it's something that I'm extremely grateful for. And I love that I was given the opportunity to come back and work for the city of Gilroy. Being able to serve it has been a lifelong dream of mine and I'm excited that I get to work a lifelong career with them. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, LeAnn.
Good evening, everybody. This is Jackie Gifford. She is a new management assistant assigned to support the Fleet and Facilities Division in the Administrative Services Department. She actually started work in May of this year, but due to some scheduling, this was our first opportunity to introduce Jackie to the council and the community. Jackie obtained her associate's degree from San Jose City College and her bachelor's degree from San Jose State University. It is through these degree programs where she gained knowledge and education about the business world. She spent about 13 years working as a property manager, where she gained experience with contracts, leases, accounts receivable and collections, audits, and preparing various reports for her team. She also spent about four years working for a startup company where she served as an executive assistant, an account manager, and a project manager. In those roles, she worked again on contracts, purchasing, financial transactions, and fleet programs. These are all areas that prepared her for her current role that she has in our Facilities and Fleet Division. One of Jackie's areas of strength is the use of computer software programs to achieve efficiency and the performance of her work. She jumped right in when she started here and she has already mastered our ERP system. I know because I get lots of transactions that I need to approve that she's put into the system. In addition to her technical skills, the team was very impressed by Jackie's positive, can-do attitude, willingness to help the team get the job done, and her customer service and communication skills are top-notch. Jackie lives here in Gilroy and really enjoys serving her community in this role. So please join me in welcoming Jackie Gifford to the city of Gilroy.
Thank you for the introduction, LeAnn. I just want to say that I'm really excited to join the city of Gilroy. I moved here two years ago and I was unsure what I wanted to do, but when I got this opportunity, I applied and I was lucky enough to be on Walter's team. So just want to say thank you. And like I said, I'm honored to serve the public and join the team and just join the progress that the city is already doing. And yeah.
Thank you and welcome. Okay, Heba.
Honorable Mayor and council members, good evening. I'm pleased to introduce Ryan Austin. Ryan joined our Public Works team as a project manager on September 2nd. He's a graduate of Northwoods University located in Waspon Beach, Florida, with a Bachelor of Business Administration, where he was an all-sun conference baseball player. After graduating, Ryan moved to the Bay Area to join the stadium operations team for the San Francisco 49ers and helped open the Levi's Stadium in 2014. Having a total of 10 years of work experience with the San Francisco 49ers, including five years as a senior project manager, Ryan brings extensive project management expertise with numerous project construction initiatives. I should mention that Ryan also spent two years with the San Jose Sharks and SAP Center before returning to the 49ers in 2017. A devoted husband and father and a proud Gilroy resident since 2017, Ryan enjoys spending time with his spouse, energetic four-year-old son, and fun-loving six-year-old golden doodle. Ryan is also a passionate college football fan. On his spare time, Ryan enjoys family trips to the Santa Cruz Boardwalk for roller coasters and beach fun, and loves to travel whenever possible. Our team is thrilled to have Ryan on board and we are excited for the positive experience and contributions he will bring to the city of Gilroy.
Thank you, Heba. Very nice of you. Hi, everyone. Pleasure to meet all of you. My energetic four-year-olds over there. Hi, Riley.
I've had more fun watching him during this.
Like Heba said, I've lived here since 2017, so I'm very excited to really get more involved in my community and excited to join this great team. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, welcome, everybody. That was such a pleasure. Okay, we're moving on to ceremonial items. We have three proclamations, and the first one is going to be for United Against Hate Week, which is September 21st through the 27th. So I'm going to meet you-know-who at the podium. You know who you are, okay? Susan, Mary, and Ashiba. Yeah.
And we're going to bring our team up because although we, the three of us have led, there is a, this team right here, has done all the events with us all year long.
Okay, well, I'm going to read the proclamation. You can take a picture if you like and then, yay. Okay, well, welcome, everybody. So this is a proclamation for United Against Hate Week, and it says, "Whereas the United States is a nation of immigrants whose strength comes from its diversity, and whereas the Constitution enshrines equality on all individuals regardless of race, gender, orientation, religion, or political views, and whereas the city of Gilroy wishes to affirm its commitment to the well-being and safety of all its diverse communities, including black, indigenous, yeah, sorry, people of color, Asian-American Pacific Islander, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning plus, immigrants, unhoused children and adults with disabilities, all religious, and other diverse communities. And whereas the city of Gilroy wishes to ensure that its BIPOC, the ones that I just listed, immigrants, unhoused children and adults with disabilities, all religious and other diverse communities are not alone, and that they can speak out to help stop the spread of bigotry. And whereas, due to the history of violence against the aforementioned communities, we must work together to create community-centered solutions that stop the violence in all communities. And whereas the city of Gilroy stands together with our diverse communities and calls on all constituents and leaders to join us in condemning racist, homophobic, and harassing attacks against communities of color in all forms, and renewing our commitment to speak out against such attacks, defend and protect those targeted, and seek out and punish those who commit hate crimes against any members of our community. Now therefore, I'm Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, on this ninth day of September 2024, together with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim September 21st through the 27th as United Against Hate Week." We can all clap? Can we take a photo? Okay? Of course. We have the city councils, the city council members, do you all have one?
We do. We all have one.
Everybody has one.
Yep, okay. All right, thank you all. Thank you. Okay, Alyssa, are you here from Jacob's Heart? Okay. Oh, yeah.
Hi. Okay, this is a proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
And this is Alyssa from Jacob's Heart, right? Okay.
Whereas the character of our community is revealed in how we treat our most vulnerable, and whereas cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease among children, more than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, boy, my pronunciation with words today, congenital anomalies, and AIDS combined, and whereas nonprofit organizations serving South Santa Clara County, such as Jacob's Heart, have been keeping medically fragile children and families housed, fed, and emotionally supported throughout the Gilroy community. And whereas the oncology department at Lucille Packard Children's Hospital at Stanford recognizes Jacob's Heart as a trusted community partner in providing family-centered care that addresses the emotional, practical, and financial struggles of families of children with cancer in the city of Gilroy. And whereas it is important for all Gilroy city residents to recognize the impact of pediatric cancer on families within our community and honor the legacies and memories of children in our community whose lives have been cut short by cancer. Now therefore, I'm Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, on this ninth day of September 2024, together with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and invite the Gilroy community to honor the work of our local Children's Cancer Support Services and contributions to childhood cancer awareness.
Do you want to say about Jacob's Heart? You do? Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alyssa and I'm here as a representative of Jacob's Heart. I just wanted to say thank you to mayor and council for proclaiming September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. At this moment, we are actually serving 392 thou, sorry, 392 families, which comes out to 1,800 individuals, give or take, oh my gosh, sorry. And without your guys' support, we really can't advocate for these families. And with that advocating support, we're able to support these families who have children with cancer in our community.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got one more. And Andrew, yeah, there you are. This is for National Preparedness Month. Andrew's our emergency guy, right? Emergency guy? Emergency guy.
Whereas across the nation, September has been designated as National Preparedness Month to encourage all Americans and communities to prioritize emergency preparedness. And whereas National Preparedness Month is led by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, and is sponsored by its READY campaign promoting preparing at-risk populations for risk and disasters. And whereas all Gilroy citizens are urged to prepare for disasters and encourage their family and friends to do so by visiting the FEMA's READY campaign at ready.gov for essential preparedness resources. And whereas the city of Gilroy is committed to promoting community resilience through partnership development to improve awareness and educate citizens about preparing their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency. And whereas the city of Gilroy partners with various governments, businesses, local organizations, and community volunteers to plan and increase public awareness and education concerning the importance of preparing for emergencies. And whereas, when citizens working together with the government take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities, community resilience is improved after a disaster. And whereas ongoing emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. Now therefore, I'm Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, on this ninth day of September 2024, together with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Preparedness Month.
He's going to say something too. Yeah. Go ahead, tell us what more we need to know.
Plenty of wording there. Madam Mayor and council members, thank you so much for highlighting National Preparedness Month. Your efforts really go a long way to raising awareness in the community and making sure that we're better positioned to face any emergency. Something that I do want to reinforce is that this isn't a month-long focus. This is a lifelong commitment to safety and resilience. And I know together, we can really do much, much more to be more prepared and stronger as a community. Thank you.
Okay. I think everybody's got their marching orders as to what to recognize this month, right? Okay, council correspondence is item three, and we have none. Item four, 4.1. Presentations to the council, this is for members of the public who wish to speak on items that are not on the agenda. I see three speakers. Would you like to call them?
Alan Espinoza to be followed by Ron Kirkish, and then the final speaker will be Elaine Gooding.
Okay, if your name was called, could you please all be in the front? Yes, right there.
Madam Mayor, city council members, I'm not new to you guys. I'm here, I reside at the Garlic RV Park. I purchased one of their tiny homes that you guys have allowed to, to be there. There's still ongoing issues that we need to resolve. Me and my next speaker, or third speaker, represent probably a good two dozen of the folks there. The other folks either don't want to speak because of retaliatory actions from management or other reasons, but we still need your help. We have a few of you coming out very soon to walk the place again. And, you know, I'd like to thank you for already doing what you have been doing. There were a bunch of abandoned cars and motorhomes and such that were there that the city came through and kind of did a sweep. 99% of them are gone. And with the soft heart, we understand that everybody needs a place to live. You know, I have no idea why some people want to either remain homeless or what other issues they have. I had no idea. But everybody doesn't want it in their backyard, but I understand they have to live somewhere and be somewhere, but, you know, cleanly. You know, that was our biggest gripe was just the mess that they would leave. And so the city kind of helped out and cleaned, cleaned up that. Aside from that, you know, we'd like to see you guys soon again, and I understand we will be. And hopefully we can, you know, since you guys gave them permission to have these tiny homes there that we have to sign a 10-year lease on, we're going to be there for the next 10 years or longer. And that being said, you know, you guys need to be on the ball and making sure that everything's taken care of, that should be taken care of, be in compliance with everything that's supposed to be in compliance with. Mr. Forbes has helped us out with that for a while. I don't know where that stands, but hopefully I'll hear soon that they are in compliance. You know, I know a certain few things that might have been taken care of, but I know others that have not gotten things taken care of. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and community. Hero. Hero is a special word and attributed to special people. In this case, hero is attributed to three Gilroy firemen who served the community of Gilroy, and, and their names are Gilroy Fire Captain Daniel Lozano, Engineer Carlos Hernandez, and firefighter Marcus Ortega. While they were off duty and driving away to eat dinner, they saw a young girl's body floating in a pool in Chico. They jumped into action to save her from drowning. After they performed a couple rounds of CPR and giving respiration with a bag-valve mask, the young girl revived and she was then sent to another hospital via Aravak. The girl is recovering and expected to be released soon, all thanks to our Gilroy firemen heroes. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine?
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is Elaine Gooding and I have resided at the Garlic Farm RV Park for 15 years now and the tiny homes at the Balsa in Monterey. I addressed the city council concerning the lawlessness of the RVs and some of them that had caught on fire and stuff, and I appreciate and just want to thank all the people that was involved in getting all of that cleared away. If you haven't driven by, please do because it's all clean. They came out there with dumpsters, got rid of the garbage, got rid of the bugs, the critters that were coming over the wall. But we're asking one more thing on that is because the kids get on the bus there by Carls, and because some of the people still are thinking about coming back, and if we could deter that by getting yellow striped out there, that would limit them, even though there are signs that say no parking, blah, blah, blah overnight, like they listen to that. But anyway, I would appreciate some kind of either red, because I know the truck drivers, as far as almost where the painted wagon ends and it becomes gravel and then it becomes the cement, if they painted that yellow because the truck drivers stopped, they get vittles and stuff and for their trip. So it's kind of always, that's how it's been in that area. But with the kids getting on, and now that the problem is solved for a while, you know, let us try to continue on with that work, and that would be great because, again, the kids get on and off, and I'm only going to be there a couple more years, but they're going to be there for quite a few. And it would be nice to have it all safe for them out there. And again, I do want to thank all the people that helped in the area cleaning it up, and I have asked Carolyn, as, as, I don't want for no one on the spot, had asked them to come out again, just to see how great of a job they did do and how hopefully the park itself will comply with the trimming of the trees, which I know the officer and the code enforcement folks, which worked side-by-side with me for the last three weeks, and making sure they cut back the trees because that again lures them in for the shade and so forth. And when that happens, then we're coming on to winter. So then we've got fires going on, and behind us over there, there's a lot of grass, and we've had fires over there. And whatever we can do, I mean, the community wants to help because they don't want to have to move. Nobody wants to have to move. Come on, get real. I mean, it takes you, got to con everybody to come to your house to help you move. So with that in thought, I'd like to leave it with a Joyce Meyer quote. If you don't know that, one of the Christian speakers, and she said, "When good people do nothing, evil thrives." And we don't want that to happen in that area. It's a small, little community, 159 spaces. We've all lived there 10 years or more, and we don't want to go nowhere, and we want to keep it a safe community. I've lived here all my life. I want to keep it that way. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the speakers, correct? All right. Thank you all. All right.
All right, reports of council members. Councilmember Barco.
Councilmember Barco.
Councilmember Armandares.
Thank you, Mayor. There have been no scheduled meetings from my committees, but I do want to remind folks that September 28th is the Taman Festival in downtown Gilroy, and I hope to see you all out there.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes, Gilroy Gardens. July presented challenges due to the extreme heat, which impacted attendance. Out of 35 operating days, 22 were extreme heat days, representing 57% of the month. This significantly lowered consumer demand. And the heat continued to be a factor also in August. Despite the heat, Carnival Nights had a spectacular opening night, attracting over 2,000 attendees. This success is a testament to the dedication and hard work of Gilroy Gardens' team. With increasing attendance, they are seeking additional docents to assist at the theater shows. A reminder, Gilroy residents can enjoy Carnival Nights for just $10 per ticket. Gilroy Gardens is thrilled with the momentum behind both the 25th anniversary launch and the 2025 membership campaign. Their pricing strategy is hitting the mark, and they are optimistic about strong attendance into the fall, especially with Halloween and holiday events on the horizon. Thank you.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. From the Valley Transportation Policy Advisory Committee, Happy Transit Month. I want to provide some stats from the VTA bus routes in Gilroy. These daily boarding increases are from June 2024, and there's an increase in ridership year-over-year. And to these riders, I want to say thank you for riding public transit. The Rapid 568 has 833 daily boardings. Express 121 has 56. The Frequent 68 has 4,400. The Local Route 84 has 74 boardings per day. The Local Route 85 has 128, and the Local Route 86 has 73. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, a groundbreaking financing pilot with strong customer protections that makes single-family home electrification more accessible for Californians was approved by the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors in a unanimous vote. At scale, clean energy financing can support 6 million low- and moderate-income families. In California, 40% of the state's population is accessing clean electric appliances like heat pumps for home cooling. SVE is launching this pilot to meet the immediate clean energy needs of its customers, develop the groundwork for a potential program expansion, and provide lessons learned as the California Public Utilities Commission weighs a joint utility proposal to offer a similar model of financing statewide. The SVE pilot will make clean electric appliances and home upgrades accessible for low- and moderate-income households who may not qualify for certain low-income programs or high-income tax credits, higher-income tax credits. The finance offering removes the upfront cost barrier of the appliances by providing zero-interest loans for the home upgrades that are repaid over approximately a decade through the utility bill. The repayment charges will be offset by savings across gas and electric bills. SVE's pilot is also designed with stronger customer protections for participants, including bill monitoring and customer support for equipment operation, and to ensure that energy savings are realized. The pilot is expected to serve about 200 homes with a combination of HVAC heat pumps, heat pump water heaters, energy efficiency, and solar plus battery storage. SVE's pilot program, if scaled, has the potential to help California accelerate building, decarbonization, and make progress towards its clean energy future. The pilot is slated to launch in early 2025. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
No report.
Councilmember Tovar.
No report.
Okay, I've got a few. VTA's board meeting, the status of the large nine Bay Area County Transportation Bill, that's what's coming up in 2026. Everybody, I think, already knows that the $20 billion housing bond has been pulled from the ballot. You will not see that in 2024. You will still see, however, Prop 5, which is the state proposition that asks to lower the threshold for housing bond passage from 2/3 to 55%. So you'll still see that. But on the transportation one, it's down to two scenarios now. I've been trying to keep everybody abreast of this. One scenario is that it will be a sales tax, a half percent sales tax over 30 years for five counties. It would not include Santa Clara County, and that would raise $540 million a year. The other scenario is all nine counties again, and it's a payroll tax or a parcel tax, a 54-cent payroll tax, a 28-cent-per-square-foot parcel tax. That one would raise 1.5 billion per year. So obviously, they are nothing alike. One is three times the revenue of the other. But just keeping you all posted as to where that stands. Also, South County Youth Task Force met, and lots of great coordinated efforts there through Gilroy and Morgan Hill together. Gilroy and Morgan Hill School Districts, both of our police departments, county agencies, including the district attorney's office and nonprofits alike, all trying to engage youth, form action plans, and redirect from gang risks. It's quite uplifting to see the dedication and concerted efforts put forth by so many to reach all of our youth at the source. Lastly, I want to say that, yeah, what our three firefighters did in that rescue was awesome. I hope we're going to have an actual chance to, yes, we will have them here, so that's when we will acknowledge. I don't want the public thinking that we aren't aware and we're just ignoring it. Not at all. That time will come. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. We only have one item on there. So any public comment, Beth?
No comment.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilwoman Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Barco.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley? Yes, passes unanimously. Okay, under bids and proposals, 7.1. Award a three-year contract to Alpine Landscapes in a total amount of $1,163,958, with an annual not-to-exceed amount of $387,986 for the Community Facilities District Landscape Maintenance Services, with up to two one-year extension options, and adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year '25 budget by $28,927. Haba, it's all yours.
Good evening once again. This agenda item is regarding the Community Facilities District, CFD Landscape Maintenance To provide some background information, the CFD allow for funding of vital public services, including landscape maintenance. The landscaped areas within CFDs enhance community aesthetics and property values. These areas often lack funding, and therefore, the CFD financing is essential for the upkeeping of the landscapes and other services. The previous contract ended at the end of August of this year, and in preparation, we issued a request for proposals that was publicized in the San Jose Mercury News and our website on July 20th of this year. In response, we received six proposals. The proposals were evaluated by three-member panels. Two members are internal from the Public Works and Community Development Departments, and one from the City of Morgan Hill. The selection process was based on six criteria, including cost, the personnel expertise, and the staff management plan. The local preference points were awarded per the city's purchasing policy, and Alpine Landscapes was selected as the top-ranked contractor. The annual contract amount for Alpine Landscapes is $369,510, in addition to 5% contingency in the amount of $18,476, for a total annual expenditure for each of fiscal year '25, '26, and '27 in the amount of $387,986. This is for a total three-year contract cost of $1,163,958. To accommodate the 5% contingency, in addition to a slight deficiency in the budget for fiscal year '25, we're also recommending an additional budget for this fiscal year in the amount of $28,927. So the staff recommendations is to approve a word of the three-year contract to Alpine Landscapes in the total amount of $1,163,958, with an annual not-to-exceed amount of $387,986 for the CFD Landscape Maintenance Services. Authorize the city administrator to execute at the end of the contract term two of one-year extension options at the city's sole discretion, and adopt a resolution amending fiscal year '25 budget to increase funds to $260,000 in the amount of $28,927. With that, I conclude my presentation, and will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Haba. Okay, council members. I don't see anyone on my screen, so I'm looking around. None. I don't see any all-open public comment. Seeing none, no public comment. Okay, then looking for a motion?
Move for approval?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Tovar to approve, seconded by Councilmember Marks. Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley? Yes, passes unanimously. On to 7.2. Award a three-year contract to Jensen Landscape Services LLC in the total amount of $3,378,990, with an annual not-to-exceed amount of $1,126,334 citywide landscape services, and authorize up to two one-year extension options.
This following item is for the citywide landscape services funded by the General Fund. Similarly, the landscaping services has been contracted out for the past 20 years. The maintenance contracts include parks, roadways, trails, and city facilities. The services include plant-and-tree care, weed-and-pass control, irrigation maintenance, sports field mowing, and other general maintenance. The citywide landscape services contract similarly expired at the end of August, and in preparation, we issued a request for proposal at the same time that was publicized on the city's website and in the San Jose Mercury News on July 20th of this year. In response for this RFP, we received five proposals. The proposals were evaluated by the same three-member panel, based on the six criteria established for selection, including costs and staff expertise, in addition to the local preference points that were awarded per the city's purchasing policy. Jensen Landscape Services was selected as the top-ranked contractor. The annual contract amount is $1,072,695, in addition of 5% contingency, in the amount of $53,635, for a total annual expenditure of $1,126,330, and a total three-year contract cost not to exceed $3,378,990, funded by the General Fund, Fund 100. If the contract is extended beyond this three-year period, different fees may apply depending on the staff charges and rates at the time. The recommendations are to approve a word of a three-year contract to Jensen Landscape Services in a total amount of $3,378,990, with an annual not-to-exceed amount of $1,126,330 for citywide landscape services. Authorize the city administrator to execute at the end of the contract term two of one-year extensions, only at the city's sole discretion. With that, I conclude my presentation, and will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Tovar, I see you on the board.
Yeah, thank you, Haba. Thank you for those both reports. I don't have a question, but just can you remind the public where the last contract and this contract companies are from?
Jensen was also performing the citywide landscape. The contract was first established in March of 2018, and ended in February of 2021, and then later extended twice until it concluded at the end of August of this year.
Yeah, no, no, I just, I want people to know that where these companies are located.
Oh, both Alpine, that's recommended for the CFD landscaping, and Jensen recommended for the citywide landscaping are both local.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Councilmember Armandares and Councilmembers Hilton, for some reason, you're on my screen as 7.1. So 7.2, Councilmember Armandares?
Maybe I pushed it the wrong way. Thank you, Mayor. Haba, do we know when the last time was that we assessed what these costs would be if we performed this work in-house with our own employees?
We have not performed this assessment. Our parks team includes five crew members and one supervisor, and does not currently have the capability of maintaining the landscaping maintenance requirements that needed citywide.
I just, I know that other cities have found if they, after contracting out or when they consider contracting out these services, that sometimes they find that it is cost-effective to keep those services in-house or to contract them back in, right, to bring them back in, not just in terms of the cost to the city, but also the economic factors and how they benefit the city and the community, to have that work being done by our public sector workers. So we've turned this contract over how many times, do we know, without an assessment? Since 2018?
No, before then. If I may also mention that such maintenance would require a significant amount of equipments that we don't currently have. With that being said, we haven't conducted the assessment.
An assessment, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. So is this just for the medians in our streets that have vegetation, or also the medians in our streets that are either like dirt, plain dirt, or concrete, where weeds pop up? Because in the past, we've talked about that, and whether they were going to take care of those or not, I know a few of us kind of waited and waited and waited, and finally created our own list in our own neighborhoods of where we saw them. So will they automatically take care of those, or is it something where if we see it out in the community, we should, as residents, call it out, like weeds in the median?
This contract is for landscaping purposes, not hardscaping. With that being said, if there are any concerns about the hardscaping, whether damage to a median or the actual hardscape, this is something that we can handle in-house.
In-house, okay, thank you.
Doesn't that fall under weed control?
The hardscape is like paving breaks if it's a concrete median. We recently had a damaged center median that we've reconstructed using internal staff.
But if there's no damage, it's just like the removal of the weeds?
Yeah, we're just talking about weeds.
That's part of the landscaping contract.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no other council member questions, public comment?
Public comment.
Okay, closing public comment. Looking for a motion?
So?
Okay, motion moved by Councilmember Tovar. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Marks. Okay, roll call. Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
No.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley? Yes, pass six to one. Okay, item eight, public hearing, 8.1. Okay, item eight, public hearing, 8.1. Introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy adjusting future council salaries, okay, is?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So a little bit of background, the compensation for Gilroy City Council Mayor is determined by ordinance, general law cities, the amount is regulated by state law. SB 329 was recently increased the compensation maximums based on population of general law cities. The stated intent of that law is to help diversify representation on councils and to help expand opportunities for those who may not be able to serve with a lower compensation amount. On April 8th, council issued direction to increase salary of council members to 1,600 consistent with state law and to continue the practice of the mayor to earn 50% more based on the higher level of time and effort for that position and the performance of the duties. So the ordinance proposed amends the current ordinance adjusting the amounts of compensation for future mayor and council members, for council members from 1,022 to 1,600 per month and then for mayor from 1,500 to 2,400 approximately. Existing council salary totals 91,980, the proposed salary increases to 144,000, so an increase of $52,020. Alternatives, council may modify or reject the ordinance. This is not recommended by staff, the amounts were deliberated by council in April with direction for the proposed compensation adjustments to return for consideration. The proposed amounts are consistent with state law and current practice and establishing adequate compensation for losses due to time off of gainful employment for to serve at council meetings, so as on assigned boards and commissions may provide opportunities for those who wish to serve on the council in the future, but who may not otherwise be able to do to financial impact of service. So fiscal impact for fiscal year 25, since the change will go into effect in January halfway through fiscal year, fiscal year 25, it'd be $26,010 which would be absorbed in the existing budget and then annually $52,020 thereafter adjusted by CPI in future years per existing practice and ordinance. Next steps, if introduced, the item will be brought back for approval at the next council meeting on the consent calendar. So recommendations for council to make a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance and be introduced an ordinance to City Council of the City of Gilroy adjusting future mayor and city council member salaries. That completes the presentation.
Okay, are there any questions from council members? Okay, I see one public comment, why don't I open that, by opening the public hearing? Oh, I need to ask if there's any ex parte communications? Okay, then opening the public hearing, okay, Ron Kirkish, go ahead.
Good evening, again, I'm actually supporting this. I believe that times have changed, things have gotten more expensive, travel, eating, and your time is valuable and that we need to adjust the compensation, increase it to match what is actually expected at other communities too. I understand other communities have done this too. So I'm encouraged, I think that this will also have the advantage of attracting others to typically, to maybe run for office because there's a better compensation package, so I'm encouraged and I think this should pass, thank you.
Thank you, no other public comment? Okay, closing public comment, it's back to council. Oh, Fred, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, mayor. Just as I, you know, this is coming back from our April 8th discussion and I am going to vote no against this again because again, I know it's a small amount, but as I sit back on April 8th, I think any additional funding that we have should go to our first responders as, you know, any amount possible, so I'm going to stay with my no vote on this, thank you.
Any others? Okay, I'm just going to say before we vote that for the public, just to make sure this is clear, after the increase, it brings council members to $1,600 a month. So for people who think that the number is large, it's 1,600, mayor's 50% more than that, so that would go to 2,400 a month. And I don't think anybody would think, would believe that this is all you need to live on, this, it's not going to encourage people to run for office who don't have another job and need one, but it is a stipend that is a little bit better than what's there now, still less than what cities to the north of us are doing, but it's trying to bring Gilroy closer in line with what would not discourage people from running for office. That's really what it's trying to do, is to avoid that, keeping people from even considering it, because unless you consider running, you can't necessarily give voters the choices that maybe they would like. Okay, so that's, that's all I'm going to say and, okay, so?
Well, I was, well, I was up there on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Just for the, for the record, we have to make, you have to make a motion first as shown on the agenda to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading.
Okay, well?
So move.
Okay, Councilmember Marks, do you still want to make a?
I was just going to say that I don't, I don't know if the public realizes how many hours we actually put in as council members and the mayor puts in even more, but sometimes in an average week, I put in over 20 hours. And I, I believe that each one of us works really hard and I feel that we should be compensated for it and I, I am very much for this. I think it's only fair to have an equitable amount as other cities have done and make this a job that, you know, people would look forward to having because it is work and we travel and we don't put in any expense accounts, we attend meetings during lunch, we pay for our own lunches, we don't get anything free, so I, I am very much in favor of this.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Brocko, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Marks to read the motion by title, sorry, motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance and introduce or they have to be separate?
No, no, we have to, the first motion.
Okay, so that's the first motion, roll call.
Councilmember Brocko?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
No.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay.
I need to remind the council that under our charter, if that motion does not pass unanimously, the clerk will have to read the ordinance actually.
Okay, so Councilmember Tovar, will you change your vote just to waive the reading? You can still vote no on the ordinance, okay.
So it passes unanimously and the clerk will now read the title to the ordinance.
Okay.
I don't have it. Do you have it?
I can give this to you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending ordinance number 99-01 adjusting future mayor and city council member salaries.
So now it would be appropriate to take a second motion to actually approve the ordinance if that's your desire.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So.
Okay, so it's the reverse, Councilmember Marks made the motion, seconded by Councilmember
Brocko.
Councilmember Brocko?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
No.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, okay, that's six to one. All right, everyone, item unfinished business, we have none, introduction of new business, legislative update. Jimmy, are you going to do this or no, Bryce, okay?
Excuse me, Mayor, Council, so this is a follow-up to earlier legislative update that we presented earlier in the year. We are actually in the final stages of this legislative session from the state legislature. Most of the items are at the governor's desk to sign or must wait till the next session. So the governor has, in, sorry, the governor has until the end of September to sign bills or veto and a report includes statewide propositions and local ballot measures. No action is required nor is staff currently recommending an action on these. Council members may pull legislative items to identify desire to oppose or support which would then be sent to the governor. So beginning with our state legislature bills, again, these were presented previously, so I'll give a very succinct reminder of this. So SB 1037 is increased penalties for housing element non-compliance. It's important to note this is not related to builder's remedy, has passed both houses and so is up for the governor for signature. It was amended, if you recall, it was a penalty between $10,000 to $50,000 per month for any violation for not having compliance with our housing element. There was an amended update, if the city fails to meet the schedule for compliance after the state has taken action, then it is to apply the maximum rate $50,000 per month for each month until substantial compliance is reached, so they increased the, the pain of it. SB 937, permit fees collected after permit final inspection, again, this also passed both houses. This was basically allowing or prohibiting the city from collecting development fees for, like our develop, yeah, our development fees, sorry, especially for priority residential development projects. There was an amendment, so we can collect utility and public safety fees for certain, if certain conditions exist, meaning that there's already a committed project that is dependent on those funds and fees. City may enter into a contract to require later payment with some conditions. AB 2433 was a bill that was originally proposed to have private third-party building inspectors be able to be hired by builders in order to do inspections themselves to, the intent was to speed it along. The hearing has been postponed, so will not be effective next year. The bill was significantly amended, it no longer allows an applicant to, to get their own inspectors. City must now reimburse, if, if approved in the next session, city must, would then have to reimburse permit fees if inspection is not provided within 60 days. AB 2371 prevents cities from banning electrified security fencing, passed both houses, they did make an amendment, so we are able to do a little bit more regulatory action on, on those, such fencing, but there are certain conditions where the original language applies. AB 1890, Put Works Projects reporting, they adjusted the amount a little bit, so whenever there's a change in contract or subcontractor, we have to advise the Department of Industrial Relations, and so they just changed the amounts from any change of 10,000 to any increase that puts to the contract over 30,000 or for contracts that were already over 30,000, 25% or 200,000, whichever is lesser. SB 1209, LAFCO insurance coverage, passed both houses, it's also at the governor's desk, amendment to it, so the original language, we'd have to provide, you know, indemnification, defendant holds harmless to LAFCO if anybody sues them over an action for the city, that expanded from just an action or determination of the commission to also including the attack, set aside, void, or annulment of an approval as well. AB 2583, school walk zones, it's held in committee, it's not expect, it won't be adopted this session, and so it was going to adjust the school speed zones from 25 to 20 miles per hour. AB 2430, passed both houses, also waiting, governor's signature, there's no real substantive amendments, this is the bill to, basically any monitoring fees that would offset the cost of monitoring performance for affordable housing covenants, we would not be able to collect. AB 2561, meet and confer on vacancies, this, this passed both houses, but it was significantly amended. This originally required that any, any vacancy rate of 10% in a bargaining unit require meet and confer with the bargaining group. Instead, now it's been amended to require a public hearing, instead of the meet and confer, must present suggestions for ways to enhance the hiring, this would be annually, and recognize employer organization gets to make a presentation to public hearing before the council. If it's over 20% vacancies from a single bargaining group, then there's certain required data that must be presented as part of that public hearing. For local ballot measures, there was one proposed, did not qualify, which is the Bay Area Regional Housing Measure, Regional Measure 4, which is for the $20 billion in bonds for, for the nine-county Bay Area for housing. Stairway propositions are six that loosely affect the city. Proposition two and four are both bonds for sale, $10 billion, the first one for public schools and community college facilities, the second one for safe drinking water, wildfire prevention, and protecting communities and natural lands from climate risks. Proposition five allows local bonds for affordable housing and public infrastructure, changes to 55% voter approval instead of two-thirds, and allows assessment of property taxes above 1%. Proposition 32 increases minimum wage from, to $17 and $18 per hour, and there's inflation that increases annually after that, so that will have an impact on, on wages. Proposition 33 expands local government's authority to enact rent control should, should a city decide to do so on residential property. And Proposition 36 allows felony charges and increases sentences for certain drug and theft crimes, basically felony charges for certain drugs and deaths under $950, and then increases sentences for other specified drug and theft crimes. If council desires to oppose or support any of the legislative items provided, staff will then prepare a letter for the mayor and it's related to the governor, and the staff will also be coordinating with the League of California Cities on future updates with our new regional public affairs manager, which the league anticipates is going to be hired before the League of California Cities Conference and anticipating it with councils at that point in time. That completes the update, happy for you to take any, any direction.
Okay, I don't see anybody on the board, but, so if you raise your hand, okay, Councilmember Tovar, go ahead.
Sorry, mayor, thank you for that, Bryce, thank you for this report, and obviously I think I'm in support of just about every one of them on here, but kind of looking at SB 1037, right, the increased penalties, kind of in reviewing this, obviously, again, obviously it's fine for cities that are not in compliance with required housing elements, right, so, and as you know, cities must be in compliance. If the city had been in compliance with our housing element sooner, would some of these builder remedy claims have been avoided?
I don't, this bill doesn't apply to that.
Does it? Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Armandares?
Sure, I'm interested in discussing. I'm interested in discussing Prop 5 and a letter of support from our city, given that we have a couple of items coming down the pike for two years from now or others to help us with our infrastructure in our city and immediately with our, I know it wouldn't qualify as a sales tax measure versus a property bond, but if in the future we need more help with our public safety or other, you know, infrastructure needs, I think it behooves us to, to support efforts like Proposition 5, especially in midterm elections, because during those, during those elections in that time, it's very difficult to get property bonds passed for critical needs, stuff like Gilroy needs.
Anybody else? Okay, I don't see any, but anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item?
Mayor? I'm sorry, mayor?
Through the city clerk?
Thank you. I noticed that there was a item up there for LAFCO and I'm always very concerned about anything that LAFCO wants to impose on cities and communities. I wasn't able to grasp the conversation about what this issue was about, but seeing LAFCO in the heading is a bother and I think we should take some time to really understand what LAFCO is trying to do. Typically, LAFCO will do something that's not good for a city, so that's my concern, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, thank you, Bryce, it's coming back to council, I don't know if there's anybody who want, oh, you, go ahead, Councilmember Brocko?
Yeah, I'm not interested in this. You take the bills that were passed, they're on the governor's desk, by the time we decide this, it'll be over, so. We're part of the cities association and they kind of do that for us by taking positions, so I don't support it.
Okay, any other comments?
I would just say there are propositions on here that are not in the hands of the governor, but the hands of the electorate, and I would ask that we take a position on, on at least Prop 5.
Okay, so I'll comment that, yes, there are propositions on here and everybody is, you know, welcome to take their own positions. Personally, I don't think that as a, as a council, we should be getting into all these things, if we do, so be it, but like, I, I do not support Prop 5, I do support Prop 36. I have signed on to support Prop 36 through our county mayor's group, so it's, if we want to get into that, then that's for this council to, to decide, but otherwise, I, I do not support Prop 5. So is there a motion?
Sure, I'd like to motion that we, that as a council, that we support Proposition 5 and address- I'd like to motion that we, that as a council, that we support Proposition 5 and address a letter stating such to, well, it doesn't have to be to the governor, but a public letter.
I said motion, and this just says council direction. Am I not supposed to do, that it should be a motion? Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Can I ask a question? Clarifying question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, from my understanding here is we're either going to take a position on all these legislative--
No, no, no. The motion is for Prop 5.
And I'll second it.
Okay. So there's a second for that. Okay. Then do we do a roll call or?
You could do a roll call. You could do any kind of vote.
Well, let's do a roll call, then we know.
Councilmember Baraco?
No.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
No.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
No.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
No. Okay. Is there any interest for a position on anything else from the city, or is everybody okay?
No, you know what? I know some of the cities have asked for support for Prop 36. I'd like to put that out there for a vote to see if we would like to add our city to the list that support it.
I would second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to support Prop 36. I already went on record saying that I support that, but this is a motion for a position of the city council, the city of Gilroy.
I'd just like to say that, if I could, Mayor? In our summary, it doesn't talk about the funding that would, if Prop 36 passes, the funding that would be taken away from the programs that are showing positive outcomes in terms of drug treatment, in terms of rehabilitation. Money from, money that is currently being directed to those programs would be now used, would now have to be used to jail the increased amount of folks that are going to be put in jail.
Okay.
And so we're essentially shooting ourselves in the foot, right, or as they'd say, cutting off our nose to spite our face if Prop 36 passes, because we are making some progress in terms of getting folks rehabilitated and getting folks into drug treatment programs. And that funding will be cut, will be cut because we'll be, again, spending an enormous amount of money jailing people.
Thank you, council member. I'm sure we all have done our own research and have our own, right. Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor, so we'll take a, go ahead.
Councilmember Baraco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
No.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes. All right. That's 6-0 in support of Prop 36. 6-1, sorry, 6-0, 6-1. Okay. That brings us to 10.2, consideration of an amendment to Gilroy City Code, Chapter 16.6-1P, card room table restrictions. Chief Espinoza.
Now, Mayor, this item is going to be presented by Captain Jason Smith.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I am presenting the staff report for your consideration and direction of amending Gilroy City Code, Chapters 16.6-1P, card room table restrictions. The city of Gilroy currently has one card room, the Garlic City Casino, which is located at 8630 San Ysidro Avenue, space number 100. The ownership and general manager approached the police department with their request to increase their gaming table limit by two, as allowed by AB 341. So AB 341, which was passed on January 1, 2023, allows local jurisdictions to amend their ordinances to increase the number of card room tables by up to two additional tables initially, and then by two additional tables every four years thereafter, not to exceed 10 additional tables. The proposed amendment would increase the maximum number of tables from 10 to 12. Any such option would also require final approval from the Bureau of Gambling Control. A similar amendment to this code was made in 2016 when the number of allowed gaming tables was increased from eight to 10. Their current location on San Ysidro Avenue has ample space for additional tables. The management of the card room has always been responsive and maintained a positive relationship with the police department. They've also been proactive with their security measures in place, including a comprehensive surveillance camera system and security personnel on site 24 hours a day. We do not anticipate any increase of calls for service resulting from the addition of two gaming tables. Given the foregoing, staff recommends amending Gilroy City Code, Chapter 16.6-1P, by increasing the number of gaming tables from 10 to 12. And if council approves, staff will bring the ordinance amendment back for approval. Before I open it up for any questions, I just want to introduce two people that are in the audience. We have the Garlic City Casino owner, Kyifun, and general manager Danny Crewe, here to answer any questions that might be specific to the card room out of my purview. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Okay. I see Councilmember Armandares.
But can you tell me the hours and of the card room? And you mentioned that there's been no increase in calls or anything from police out to their location?
Yeah, so it's a 24-hour-a-day operation. And I did some research on our calls for service over the last two years, and they've been very standard, nothing significant. A lot of the calls related that we have listed for that location are generally just in the parking lot, which could be contributed to any business.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other council, okay, Councilmember Baraco?
Yes. I just wanted to say, over the years, as this card room has grown, it used to be on Monterey Street. And when we've added tables, there's never been an uptick in calls there or any problems, and you don't hear anything bad about the card room. It's down the street from my house. You don't even know it's there, so I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other council member questions, I'll open up to public comment. I see none, but, okay, closing public comment. So it's back to council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion made by Councilmember Armandares, correct? And seconded by Councilmember Tovar to approve?
Councilmember Baraco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Thank you for being here. Okay. 10.3, Recreation Needs Assessment Implementation Introduction. Bryce, okay, I'm going to ask you, Bryce, to speak a little slowly, more slowly, because it's hard to understand. Yeah. Okay. And this is, this is one I think we all want to hear.
Understood. So a bit of background, the Recreation Division issued Needs Assessment in 2019. During that time, the COVID-19 pandemic occurred towards the end of the assessment. Recreation staffing and resources were cut as a response to that, and the report ultimately was issued in 2020. As part of those reductions, anticipating the impacts of COVID on the city, the new Recreation Division was issued two priority-focused areas. First priority is to provide services to the communities of vulnerable populations, seniors, adaptive children as example. The second was to provide the remaining full recreational programming to the greatest extent possible within its personnel and financial resources. Staffing was reduced by half, but over the years, the Recreation Division has been able to restore programming to near pre-pandemic levels through the use of contract classes and programs like aquatics and our outside provider. So the past years have been focusing on restoring services, and the next phase now is planning for growth and is starting a process to look out for the next five to 10 years to identify what services, what programs should be offered going forward. So the intent is to begin or continue implementing many of the identified strategies and use the assessment to inform the growth planning going forward. So I want to identify some of the implementation that's been done to date. One of the strategies that was identified was a need for additional fee-based programs for adults. This has received the least amount of attention from Recreation to date. Again, that is by design, is not one of the vulnerable populations, but it is hard to get contractors here for, to provide those services for adult sports or education. So we're looking at starting a pilot program. We're evaluating this right now. The typical share for contractors for classes and programs is a 60% to 70% share of those fees going to the contractor, and the rest come into the city. For certain targeted programming for contractor classes, we're going to experiment with a 90% cost share to the contractor, 10% to the city, and see if that's successful in bringing a few more contractors out to provide that type of service. The second was to restore key programs at 100% cost recovery. Many of the key programs have been restored and are targeting 100% cost recovery. We work with the finance department to adjust annual user fee updates that do occasionally come back to council as well for broader updates. Another was to recruit five to eight new contract instructors per year. Staff continues to work towards attracting those contractors. Last year, knowing that art classes were underrepresented in our programming, we were able to add two art classes contractors to the role, and more are being pursued. One of the suggestions was also to use more digital advertising to promote programs. So the Recreation Staff will be working with Communications and Engagement Office as well as an outside consultant to help better utilize these methods to get the word out about the programming and hopefully increase participation. Another one, and perhaps the largest one, is a community center. So the assessment identified Wheeler Center and renovating it and improving it. However, instead, a community center is included as a component of the new Civic Center Master Plan project that we're starting. The RFP for this plan has been released, was released actually last week, and so we're looking for whoever the selected consultant is to include a multipurpose community center as part of that Civic Center Master Plan, which will meet many of the implementation strategies that are included in that report. Another one is to create a downtown park. So the Downtown Committee recommended and council approved the creation of the Donald Elvis Prieto Downtown Papa Park. Recently, Parks Recreation Commission has recommended, issued a recommendation to the city to contract for park design to be created to improve its aesthetic and use as a park. So that will be coming to council early 2025 as we start identifying funding for that. Another one was to add grant writing support. The city has hired California Consulting, a grant writing firm, which continues to apply for and receive funding for our recreation functions. And the last was to establish a foundation, so staff will be working collaboratively with a resident-driven foundation for the parks and then also with the Parks Recreation Commission to utilize the newly granted authority by council for the collection of donations and fundraising. So the assessment identified 21 projects that were not funded as of 2020, totaling $27 million at those cost estimates. We do have some progress on four of those projects. First is golf course tank replacement. Council approved that for this year. That project is going forward. We also have Lions Creek Trail Development as one of those with earmark funding and a grant from the state as well. And then the San Ysidro Park Healthy Living Enhancement Project is also proceeding forward, also under earmark funding. And then finally, the Wheeler Center had trellis replacement. We did do demolition work on the trellis, just some safety issues there, but we're not replacing it until the results of the Civic Center Master Plan are known. Staff is beginning to explore two possibilities to help implement parks-related capital projects as we go forward. So working, going to work with Pub Works Department, HR, risk management, and finance department to look at using donated materials and volunteers from professionals for completing smaller capital improvements in construction projects. The second is we're also evaluating microphasing of parks-related capital improvements. So typically, if you have a multi-field soccer project, phasing might give you, you know, one field completed. We're looking at doing a single field over several years, perhaps, and doing the construction development in smaller phases that may be able to continue sustained improvement year to year. Again, we'll be exploring those and then obviously come back to council once that exploration is done and we know if it's viable. We're also looking at the adopted budget, fiscal 25 identifies $100,000 for implementation of the assessment, really identifying sites for pickleball, BMX, frisbee golf as examples. The staff and the Parks Recreation Commission have been working on a project for pickleball site locations, and that process is nearing completion. We anticipate ending in November, and having recommendations for council as far as a priority order of possible locations for pickleball should funding and council identify that as a project. Based on the experience with that project, we believe that the site selection and process can actually be handled in-house. So staff is planning to use the above amount instead for construction of one of the implementation projects in the assessment, the ADA restroom door retrofits at the senior center. So we've selected this project because it provides service to the community's vulnerable population as seniors and keeps the senior center as accessible in its use. So alternatives to fiscal impact, there's no alternatives have been analyzed. This is primarily an informational report about work that we're anticipating to do, with council able to issue direction as it may desire. There's no additional fiscal impact proposed. We're using existing appropriations for this Needs Assessment implementation, but if future projects require budget action, then the project will be brought before council for consideration. That completes the presentation and happy to ask any questions or comments.
I got myself on a different screen here. So council members, is anybody wanting to speak on this?
I.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead. Councilmember Klein, there, I see you.
I did like the idea, first thing was the downtown park and seeing that move forward with the design to just kind of complete it and enhance it, so I'm really glad to see that coming back to us and being in next year, I think is something really necessary. So it's good to see that. I was happy about that. And I like the idea of the microphasing for the soccer fields, because I think, you know, where Sharks Ice is going to be and what's zoned out there, as far as future planning and phases, that's a great concept to kind of focus on in looking at that project and trying to make that work out there, too. So I like a lot of what we're saying here, so good job.
So I have a question. This, it's a Needs Assessment Implementation, and there's nothing in here that's telling us that this is costing money other than some staff time to look at it, correct?
This report is, yes. We're identifying strategies and exploring programs that might be able to help us in the implementation. Most of the implementation involves some form of capital projects.
Yeah. Where I'm going with this in my head is I'm asking myself if this is premature, because, I mean, back in the day, when I first got on the council and I was looking, trying to understand Morgan Hill's financial situation compared to Gilroy and looking at their city services and our city services and per capita, and one thing that really stood out was the recreation facilities that Morgan Hill has because of the RDA bond that Morgan Hill passed, I understand that, and that it's Gilroy's lack of facilities that can keep our recreation programs or build our recreation programs to what I think we'd all like to see them be. I know that we are planning to have the community participate in considering building those facilities, a community center, revamping some of the older buildings that we have around here, including Wheeler Auditorium. That hasn't been decided yet. That's something we will go into, I think, in our next budget cycle, which starts in January. But how is this not ahead of, how is doing this now or bringing this before us now not ahead of that? I mean, it is ahead of that, but how is that okay?
So this project primarily, or this report and what we're planning to do, is a couple of things. So there's the capital projects, but we're planning to hold off on some of those. We're willing to explore going forward, so the Civic Center Master Plan will focus in this particular area. But a lot of the implementation is out in our parks and other facilities that aren't part of that Civic Center Master Plan process. Additionally, we're looking at some of the programming elements, too, so the contractor class percentages, the, and then as far as the microphasing is looking at this as potentially an ongoing future for all development going forward as funding becomes available. Really, it's a check-in as we go forward with implementation to make sure that we're not starting down a path that council wouldn't want us to pursue. So the microphasing, looking at, you know, the contractor classes, that there's general, not consensus, but that is, if there's any direction from council that we don't want to pursue one of those options there, we know about it ahead of time before we start spending staff time on it.
Okay. Is, yeah, and I want to know if it's connected to the study that we did in 2019. Okay.
Yes. Madam Mayor, when we look at this Needs Assessment Implementation, we run into a consistent roadblock, and that is the lack of facilities.
Yeah.
So we get told all the time, we should have more, we should have adult basketball leagues, we should have this, we should have that, and the first reaction we have is we don't have a place to put it. So we're trying to eliminate that initial roadblock by going through the Civic Center Master Plan, which has identified a great city asset that has land and opportunity for us to have facilities. The second part of the facilities is that the Sharks Ice that Mr. Klein just mentioned is we're also trying to make sure that we put some infrastructure at the same time that makes the incremental increase in-- that makes the incremental increase in facilities able, without hitting another roadblock, that you don't have the infrastructure in place. Until those two pieces are addressed, we don't have a lot of opportunities to increase programs because we simply have nowhere to put them. So we believe this is the first step, and the Civic Center Master Plan that has gone out to bid just last week or the week before gets that going. We want council to know that that's where we're headed, and that's where our energy is going. We only have five people in the Recreation Department. This is what we're working on, and we just want to do a check-in with council to say.
Okay, where is that place you're referring to in the beginning? You said we've identified a space. Did I miss, okay, nevermind.
The Civic Center Master Plan complex area.
Oh, this area that we haven't improved yet.
This is our best opportunity since the city owns the land to increase recreational facilities.
Absolutely, but you mean after we go through that? We haven't gone through that. Okay, very good. Okay, question. Thank you. Okay, council member Armendaris.
Thank you. I don't see an assessment in here of neighborhoods that lack facilities or lack parkland. Was that, because I remember participating in this process. It was pre-COVID, what, 2018 and 19? I remember participating in that and giving input as to that. Because I could think of two or three neighborhoods in our community that don't have accessible parks without crossing major, right, traffic ways. So was that included in the questions? Is that a different Needs Assessment? Or is that information just, like, where does that, where was that information left?
That was in, that's in the Needs Assessment. And so this approach is just overall approaches to trying to implement that. So this isn't an attempt to fill and check every single box in the plan as far as this presentation. What we're going to use these approaches is identifying those opportunities. Let's say microphasing would be a great one for the smaller parks or areas that we have a lot of infrastructure in place, to slowly improve that. And so the thought is to look at the entire recreational, the park system as a whole. And so be using the information from that study in order to inform the decisions going forward. This is kind of a first check to see if these approaches, these thoughts, are something that's potentially viable.
Okay, anybody from the public wanting to speak on this? Okay, no public comment. So this is just receive the presentation and provide direction if desired. That's fine. We need our Civic Center rebuild. We need, looking forward to that someday.
Yep.
Okay. Item 11.1, request to add to the September 16th agenda, the United Sovereign Americans Resolution. So needs a decision by the council. So who's, Bryce, are you speaking on this?
Just really briefly, just to announce it. So we did receive a fair memo or a future agenda, future agenda item request memo to, for the council to consider adding to the September 16th meeting a resolution in line with the United Sovereign Americans presentation of their proposed resolution that they introduced via public comment at the previous meeting. The assessment in the staff report on the cost is accurate as far as low cost. It's some staff time to prepare it if, should council determine to proceed with that. That concludes the presentation.
Okay, council member Marks, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, a couple of weeks ago, a group came and asked us if we would go ahead and pass a resolution. They brought us a resolution. And I believe in fair and equitable elections, and I'm not saying that anything was wrong with our other elections, but I would like to see if we're interested in getting on board with other cities. There's, they have, according to them, 20 states that have also pushed for this. And I just would like to have a chance to have the council discuss it to see if they want to accept it as is or part of the resolution or just basically supporting fair and equitable elections.
Mayor.
Okay, yes, council member Tovar, and then I see council member Hilton after you.
Thank you, and thank you for those comments, council member Marks. So I'm a little confused here because in your request is there's no staff time and no cost, and I just heard there's very little. So there is some cost and staff time involved with this, correct, Bryce?
I think Jimmy will go ahead and answer that, yeah.
That, the cost is the same it would be for any council member who did a council-initiated item. So the reparation of the one-page staff report is city staff.
Right, okay. And, you know, again, I don't have any problem having a discussion on this, but I'm just a little concerned because, and I remember, you know, in reading what they said and going back and listening to what they said, but, you know, am I missing something? Have we had any issues with fair and accurate elections here in Gilroy that we would even want to consider this?
So I think that's getting in, well, I don't, I know. I think that's what has to be, we can't discuss it here because it's not actually on the, I mean, this is so confusing me. It is on the agenda, but not on the agenda.
Right, no, I understand. I'm trying not to toe the line here.
But that's the point. It's everybody's going to have to decide, should this be something that the council discusses or not?
Yeah.
Okay, council member Hilton?
Thank you. So I have a clarifying question. So council member Marks, you said that you believe that there hasn't been any issues with fair elections or?
I'm not saying that there are or there are not. This is for the council to discuss if they want to do it. We had a group of citizens that asked for this to be put on the agenda, and I felt that as a representative of all citizens, that we owe them that much. And now it's up to us to say if we want to go any further with this.
So one of the lines actually says, whereas California's 2022 general election appears to have been invalid.
Okay, but see that, remember what I said a little bit ago? Accept all of it, accept part of it, except it's up to the council to do whatever. I'm not telling you that I agree 100% with it.
Yeah.
I am saying that we were asked if we would consider a resolution. I am listening to what the constituents brought forth, and it's up to this council what they want to do.
I would just like to say, I understand you're next to speak, council member Armendaris, but when it comes to the wording, that's up to us. All that was presented by the group that came to speak was their suggested wording. We get suggested wording all the time. It doesn't mean that's the wording we adopt. So the question isn't that wording. The question is having, doing a resolution at all on this subject and having it brought before the council to discuss. Okay, council member Armendaris.
Thank you. Two points. We have rejected time and time again any resolutions that are not germane to our roles as a city council. We've rejected them, refused to even discuss them, so I want to remind us of that. And this feels very much like that, given that we have a Department of Justice, an Office of Civil Rights, a county registrar of voters, a Secretary of State, a district attorney, and others at the federal, state, and county levels that assess these things. And our own Attorney General and our own Secretary of State in their reports on voter fraud have found nothing of the sort in the data that is not even quoted or cited in this resolution. And so I have a hard time us entertaining it because it's based on a premise that there is some type of rampant voter fraud, and we're not getting that from our experts.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, just one last comment.
Sure.
Sorry, just to kind of comment on, and thank you, council member Marks. You mentioned that, you know, you're listening to the constituents, obviously. I think we all do, and I think every week.
Those folks weren't from Gilroy.
Okay, let's not interrupt.
I'm sorry. You know, and I think, again, I think we hear from constituents every week on different items or different things that they would like to see on the agenda. So again, I'm just curious as to why this one here, because we hear from constituents all the time, and we don't, you know, we're not throwing everything out there for discussion or put on the agenda. So I do have, again, I do have some great concerns about having a discussion on this, so I don't know against it.
So we have, I want to commend council member Marks for following the process. We have a process. That's why we installed the process. She's followed the process. She's bringing it here for everyone to ask. Everybody's going to feel how they feel about it, but the process has been followed, okay? And that this is how you ask to get something on the agenda. Okay, so if there's no other discuss, is this something I need to ask for public comment? Oh, I do. Public comment.
No public comment.
Okay, no public, well, if you want to, public comment needs to be known up here. If you would like to please let our city clerk know that you want to speak? That's, yeah, I'm sorry. You have to let the city clerk know, and then yes. We, we. Public comment is absolutely welcome. We just don't know about it unless you've let the city clerk know, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, and you have three minutes, and the clock should be visible.
Okay, we'll use that long. My name is Sue Bizini, and I'm a volunteer for United Sovereign Americans, and I want to speak in favor of adding the resolution to your city council meeting next week. Many Californians question the trustworthiness of our elections. What you heard in your previous council meeting was a powerful resolution that outlined the massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election, from registration through certification. Federal law outlines strict standards that must be followed in a federal election. This is a federal election. From starting with specific requirements for valid voter registrations, we shared that in the 2022 general election, there were over 5.8 million ineligible or uncertain registrations on the California state voter rolls. Of those, over 2.7 million voted in that election. There were almost 124,000 more votes counted than voters who voted. And because of the information highlighted above, there were almost 2.8 million apparent voting violations that exceeded the 90 ballots in error that California was allowed per federal law. In California, every active person on our voter rolls gets mailed a ballot, and ballot harvesting, that is turning in ballots for others, is legal. How can we tolerate having almost 6 million ballots bailed out to questionable registrants? Our voter rolls must contain only legitimate registrations. How can we ever trust in the integrity of our elections if they do not? The resolution outlined meaningful remedies that proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. Federal laws already define those remedies. USA is just demanding that our election officials follow the law. The printed copy of the resolution you received cited the many US Supreme Court precedents, federal laws, and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. It was the last page of your resolution. Though you bear no direct responsibility for anything in the electoral process, we come to you, our closest elected representatives, for support and action. This is a nonpartisan issue. The cost of not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable. So we urge you to put this resolution on the agenda for your next city council meeting. At that time, you can vote to join us in supporting fair, honest, and valid elections. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dennis?
My name is Dennis Jamison. I'm a representative of the Election Integrity Project of California, and that's been operating since 2010. Year after year, we have presented findings to the Secretary of State, to the Attorney General, to the Department of Justice, to a number of different federal and state agencies, only to be ignored. This is now 2024. We are watching what the United Sovereign Americans are doing, and we understand the realities of what they are attempting to do. And it's very simple. It's not that complicated. We're asking citizens, you are all citizens of this country, to actually weigh in on whether you're okay with questionable election results. The reality is, they may or may not be, according to experts, whether there is fraud or not, accurate. And this is really the question that we're bringing up. And this is based on data research of the Secretary of State's own voter rolls that they publish. We have seen anomalies. We have seen movement in the numbers of people on the voter rolls from one point in time to another. The reality is, this is kind of very strange to us. Not only any IPCA, but also now you have a resolution for USA. We're just simply asking whether you can support honest, fair, and valid elections. That's as simple as it is. A long time ago, a man said, you're either for me or you're against me. This is all we're asking. Are you for honest and valid elections, or aren't you? That's all.
All right, thank you. Seeing no others, no public comment? Okay, closing public comment. So it's back to council. If there's anyone else who wants to speak, fine. If not, is this a roll call or just a hand raise? Let's do a roll call. It's just, it's just, well, because everybody, yeah, and I see later people saying, who voted how? And that's not even how they voted. So, okay, let's just do, so council member Marks has effectively asked that this be on, right, so that's what we're voting on, right? Okay, Beth, if you wouldn't mind.
Council member Bracco?
Yes.
Council member Armendaris?
No.
Council member Marks?
Yes.
Council member Hilton?
No.
Council member Klein?
Yes.
Council member Tovar?
No.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, it's four to three, so, okay. We'll see it next week. Okay, thank you all. Next item is administrator's report. Jimmy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one short report. I wanted to let council know that the city of Gilroy received $190,000 grant for our application for the federal Safe Streets for All Grant Program. And that grant money will allow the city to develop its own local road safety plan, which is a very important document because once we have that plan in place, it then qualifies the city to apply for highway safety improvement programs and other grant programs for design and construction of road safety improvements. I want to thank our public works department for putting in for that grant, and we got it. And I just want to let you know. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Jimmy. I could have, I thought there were two other really great, pieces of great news that have us shared today, too. I just can't remember what the other two were, I'm sorry. But I want everyone to know that our public works department is active in getting grants and doing projects. I know there were two other things, I just can't remember what they were. So I'm going to have to let it go. All right, Andy?
No report.